81 of the amenities committee, first of June, first one of the Mayoral year. The first item of business on the agenda is 802022, collection of chairman. If I could ask for nominations. Good, Councilor Harvey. Do I have a second there? Numerous. Are there any other nominations? I'll check that there's none. If I could ask Councilor Jeremy to take the chair.
Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Eighty-one stroke twenty-two is election of vice chairman. Do we have any nominations, please, for vice chairman? Susie? Thank you very much. Is there a second offer? Dave? Stuart, thank you very much. Are there any other nominations, please? No, thank you very much. Confirmed, Dave as vice chair. Thank you, Dave. Move on to eighty-two twenty-two declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests from anyone, please. None? If something pops up during the meeting and you suddenly realise, just shout and we can add it in. Eighty-three twenty-two apologies for absence.
This is apologies from Councilor Brain.
Councilor Brain, lovely, thank you very much. Yeah, I think he's on holiday. Eighty-four twenty-two minutes to confirm the minutes of the amenities committee held on the 4th of May. Hopefully you'll remember these because they went to full council just last night. Are you all happy that I sign those minutes as a true record, please? Agreed, thank you very much. I'm going to take the action points later in the agenda because Alan has kindly updated all of the action points for us. If there's a bit of time later, we'll whizz through them. If there's time. So we'll move on to eighty-six twenty-two, which is the town team and countryside officers report. Welcome Nick and Stephen, thank you very much for your reports, which we got in advance, which is always really useful to have a good read through. George, take us through your report first, Nick.
Yeah, okay, so start with the town team report for the street scene. All the town council assets around the town centre areas have been cleaned, ready for the Jubilee celebrations. The team have been busy putting black fencing up in preparation, ready for the Jubilee events around the town. All benches on the Barnham Common have now been painted and refreshed and graffiti has been removed. Breckland council are in the process of agreeing to replace and install six new bins that have been highlighted recently by the town team, that need an urgent attention. These are all located on Breckland council land. Breckland council have also now confirmed that larger capacity bins previously agreed and promised to us for installation along the river corridor will soon be installed at the listed locations discussed previously. These are all on the order now and will be installed shortly by Serco in the coming weeks. Further requests have also been made to Breckland to replace the common vinyl signage because a lot of it's now deteriorating and unreadable. And we're sort of waiting for them to respond on that, as well as the no drinking zones and dog fowling signs that can no longer be read or are broken. A request has been made also to Breckland and Norfolk County Council in respect to licenses of street furniture in all areas. We hope that this will sort of determine and help us going forward to discuss and know whose ownership is on what bit of land. At the moment, there's a little bit of confusion between the councils in what they own and what we own. So hopefully that should clarify going forward. Floral displays, all the town council sites are now all planted. Hanging baskets and planters are all up, ready for the Jubilee celebrations. Further to the report being released, the new marketplace planters have all now been installed and planted by the town team. And these are all looking good, ready for the Jubilee celebration on the marketplace. Further requests have now been made to Norfolk County Council regarding weed spraying around the town. The town team have highlighted numerous times about the weeds growing around the town centre, especially in King Street. And we've had a response since the report was issued to you all. And unfortunately Norfolk County Council don't believe that it's a priority for them to deal with. And so they're going to continue to monitor the situation, keep us updated. But at the present time, there will be no weed spraying done. The front garden competition. With so far, since the report again was released, we initially had five people nominated. That's now gone up thankfully. And each day they're coming in and we're at a total of sixteen now. So we've still got time, but they are coming in steady. The nominations so far remaining for the residential and community garden categories, but there's nothing for businesses at the moment. The town council events and venue stuff were also pushed out and continue to circulate about the event. The posters, Facebook, Instagram, the Carnegie webpage, and we're hoping that this is obviously getting the information out to the public. The play parks, phase one of the play park repairs has now been completed and carried out. So we're up to date on the first phase. Phase two of the identified works has been issued circulated to all of the committee to give you an idea of what we're looking at for the next phase of repairs that are needed. The town council's approved on track to establish, in the process of working out costings, fully reported repairs. And they will update further as soon as they have these.
Thank you very much. This is really nice. Dave, please.
I need a couple of questions. Well, not questions really, comments. About the weed spraying, I just thought they may not consider it a priority if we do. Maybe we should just report when we see weeds to answer the Norfolk County Council. I'm not necessarily unique, but I mean, all of us know this stuff, we can put it on their portal. And they might then realise that they've been said to do consider it to be a priority, so that's something we can do. And also to do rubbish bins, a recent trip to Ely, I noticed that their bins have got a sticker on saying, this bin is full. Please ring this number and then it's got a bin number underneath, so I'll just, I mean, presumably, I think Serco emptied the bins. So presumably they have a number, do you know?
It goes to environmental waste, which goes through then to Serco. But that's something I can raise with the officer when he comes over a free sort of visit once a month.
Yeah, but if they get stickers on the bin, yes. And then that, I think his way to identify bins, then they must have some way of recognising the rest of it. And if they can do that, that's something that's deserved. And also it's great that people can then ring up and say this bin is empty.
That's good.
That's a good area, the area on Melford Bridge, Phil Island. Yep. I did bring up before about the bin is in poor repair. And I've noticed they replaced it with a wheelie bin. Number three, I don't know, I thought somebody had been mucking about, but I actually saw a bin liner in it and I thought, well, actually, it must be.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're all planning to.
There is, that's what we've been speaking to Breckland about. And they have agreed that they're going to put a proper bin in there and remove the wheelie bin. So before any issues arise and the wheelie bin ends up in the river, so we've highlighted that, yeah, definitely that concerns. So fingers crossed it should be a new bin going in there, yeah.
Mike, please.
Thank you. Just to follow your comment about the planters, which are down here. I discovered today that it's possible to sit in the market square and have and be attended, as it were, by the Guildhall team room. So I had lunch there. So I sat there for about an hour and a half, nine twenty. And was very struck by the way people like the planters and the screens behind them. People were queuing to get on their seats to eat an ice cream or have their lunch. Fantastic. Every one of them was occupied most of the time I was there and with a good turnover of people as well. So I think they're a big success. And when you add to that some of the other slight, small improvements happening around the market square, I think it is quite encouraging. It's beginning to happen, it's beginning to look a bit more as if it's a pedestrian place. We still have to encourage the cyclists and indeed a couple of motorbikes not to use it, but there's a stream of people going diagonally across it, there are other people coming out of various places you can kind of go into like Guildhall. Huge improvement is gradually happening. I'm really pleased because I think those planters have made a significant difference. They've just cut it off slightly, maybe a little bit more of a pedestrian place, not a place next to the road than you used to sit there. And you think there's cars rolling past me on my back, you're not conscious of it anymore. So well done for me, I think well done for those, so let's put them in.
Any other comments or questions? Nope. Just on weeds, Nick, I did receive an email from the town clerk this week about highways rangers. Okay. They're coming to Fethford sometime soon. And I don't think they really have much of a list when they do come. It comes out and I think to myself, well, we report things as and when, we don't just wait for them to come. And I just wondered if maybe we ought to get on to them and say, actually, if you're coming to Fethford, we as Fethford Town Council think the weeds are a priority, you know, perhaps they need to tackle that one. In the absence of anything else, I mean.
I'll also see if I can make some contact and sort of meet with them just to discuss some of our issues that we sort of feel that need prioritising. And that'll hopefully push things forward and get them.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, that's great.
They're coming, I couldn't remember the date, but it was on the email.
No worries, I'll check with the town.
Dave?
Yeah, you mentioned rangers, just reminded me of something. It seems to be that they're asking, it's quite a big ask for us to sort of list every single item that we want to look at. Because I think there are probably hundreds of wonky signs around. And so I think we could just say, can you straighten up clean, tighten up any wonky signs? Go on, there's one in particular I noticed, it was on the roundabout in Castle Street. But every time I see it, I think I'm going to nip down here with a step over them. But I'll never get around to doing it, but that's one we could do.
Thank you. And just on street furniture, obviously, I really like the idea of numbering them. Being slightly sad that I am, when I go to other towns, I do tend to look at their street furniture and the way they do stuff. And a very similar approach in Bath, where they're all numbered and there's a QR code on the, which takes you straight to the website of where to report them to. Or it's, you know, next location for a coffee shop or the toilets are located. So there's, once we've finished our audit, that would be the point that we number them, I think. And then look at other information that we might want to display on the up here, turn right for the priory type thing and, you know, that sort of thing. But I think getting the audit done first is a priority and then take it from there. The planters on the market square, I was always pleased to see extra planters for plants and sort of, you know, tidying up the area. Perhaps I'm being a little bit pedantic. We never adopt an agreed approach with street furniture, you know, a certain style of litter bin, a certain style of planter, a certain colour. And I just wanted to make that point because we're getting this sort of patchwork across the whole of the town and I'm one for consistency. And I think actually, if we're going to have planters put in, you know, let's adopt an agreed approach for planters, for benches, for bins. I assume what we've got there now will stay there for long going.
Those will be in for the time being, but it's definitely something we can do going forward, as obviously, you know, you say to adopt a process going forward.
I'm really keen for us as a committee to look at designs for bins, for benches and actually have an agreed approach. That'd be good. And the last thing, just on play areas, really pleased you mentioned that and I saw your email about that, so thank you. As soon as you've got that additional information, let us know and we can have a chat about.
Absolutely.
Because I think we've made some good progress with the repairs that have taken place. I know Cannon's Walk's been done, Pine Close has been done and residents are very happy about that, so thank you. Dennis, please.
Very much on the planters. She's winner putting hand up, so. The planters in the market space, I've noticed the same thing, that they are very popular and they do. The last time I saw them was a few days ago and they weren't treated in any way, it didn't seem, they're just, are they going to be treated or?
There is, there is options available to sustain them or treat them.
Yeah, because again, I started confirming with colour, everything to them, everything. And they preserved well and probably would have been better to treat them before we parted them. It's just, that's it, but I have had so much positive feedback on those.
Anything further for Nick, please? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to countryside officer, thank you very much Stephen for having your report.
Nice to run you through it briefly. Yep, so volunteers has had the bus driver account set up and in operation now. So potentially we can pick out twenty-nine out of the possible fifty-nine species of bus drivers we can. So fifty-seven are resident and who are classed as migrants, so kinds of laying and cloud de jay. And they, they're particular to the type of habitat found on the common itself, the twenty-nine species, so we had to find them. The survey is up and running, so if anyone would like to volunteer and have a go, feel free to join us. On the common in Castle Park, we've done a fencing gate check on the western side. We've repaired a few sections of the stock fence. We repaired eastern side bird hide. And also we've checked Castle Park. Unfortunately, some of the sloop wire is a bit loose and sagging in places, so I've gone back to the installers. And hopefully going to revisit and survey and see if they can just tighten them up a little bit. And then the hours completed for the volunteers for May is seventy. Grazing, so sheep and cattle are grazing on eastern side of the common. Put extra signage up regarding livestock grazing, so people know where they are. Also put posts on social media just to highlight the areas where they can be. So the grazers had committed in principle to graze Castle Park. In relation to fish parks, so that's eleventh of May. It's probably the last time we spoke to the environment agency representative. These are the questions I've put back to them, just so we know what we can do going forward. So one of them is the, what does the frat variation entail? So will it just be an extension or will that be for another two years? Once confirmed, then we'll be able to explore funding a more permanent solution. In the meantime, we've taken on monitoring on a fortnightly basis. I did send the video as well, just to make sure he's able to see it. And also just to check, see if this does fall under the asset inspectors of the environment agency. Because they do check of other riparian assets they own within the area. And then I presume for us to repair the bank, their council will be approached directly to carry this out. And once he's received notice of the frat variation, hopefully it will let us know. And then once he has done that, this particular representative, that'll probably be their involvement complete. So once we get acknowledgement of that, then we can maybe go down other avenues. Nothing else to put aside here?
Any questions for Stephen countryside report? No, just a couple for me, just said thank you for putting the timeline together, I found that really useful actually. Go on, Dave.
That little summary on the, on the fish pass, fish pass breach. Presumably that, we haven't had any response to any of that yet. Okay, so that is what we asked about and not what we've back. Right, clarify that in one minute. And the other thing was that I led a walk on the common on Monday, so took a group of U3A walkers round. And just wanted to say how nice it's looking on the common. And a massive difference, actually, I was on the eastern side and you walk through the wooded area and then you come out to a bit near the river. And you can just see the massive difference of where the clearance has taken place and where the wooded area still is and all the course. So you can really see the change that has happened in different areas of the commons, so thanks very much for that.
Okay, yeah, no, just say, I thought the timeline was very helpful in our packs actually, and it reminded me of quite a few things that I had forgotten. So I appreciate you pulling that together. And thank you to, I think it was Alan that got the letter sent off to the environment agency, so grateful for that. Do we know if the statement, the sort of public statement on the actual location of the fish pass, has that gone up? Normally I would walk that way, but I've been on holiday for the last week, so I haven't actually walked down there myself.
That hasn't gone up yet because we're still waiting for the environment agency to come back regarding some signage.
Right.
So who wants to put a post up, it's probably best to put up nearer the actual pass itself.
Okay.
We could put it on a fence post close by, but then it's probably a little bit too far away from it, so it doesn't relate to it.
Okay. We'll sort of bear that in mind and be sort of get that up as soon as we can.
Yeah, of course.
There's something else I was going to say, but I've completely forgotten. No, quite happy. Lovely. Thank you very much. We'll move on to eighty-eight seventy-two financial report to receive and discuss the amenities committee financial report for the two months ended the thirty-first of May. Alan?
I was really trying to show off by trying to get the report out earlier than even the month in, but I've discovered that it's come back to bite me. This morning I opened a checklist to go through, discovered that most of the costs aren't there. So it's actually not a very accurate reflection, probably more, if you take the budget and divide it by two, that's probably the more realistic reflection. There isn't very much happening from an income perspective and the expenditure is very much the same. The adivari costs haven't come through, the toilet cleaning costs haven't come through. And I'm just horrified to discover this morning that even some of the other kind of mundane costs have been gone through. So I think it's more, it's more accurate of an April result and if you take the budget divided by two, you'll probably see it. But at this time of the year, there is very little, you know, you can't really ascertain anything other than just preparing the report. So I think it's best if I keep quiet before I get myself into more trouble.
Looks very colourful. Any questions for anyone on, no, this, we're only two months in, so as Alan says, there's not a lot to report. And the only thing I was going to ask, Alan, is presumably by now we've completed the full year end for the last financial year. And we had the discussion last month about underspend being transferred to a reserve. Was there an outcome from that, from the sort of finance committee point of view? Do we have any additional reserve for amenities or have we sort of helped fund other overspends elsewhere?
No, no, I think, I think what the finance committee did and went through council last night is that they identified three key areas. The first one was that we had a commitment to the RBR floor, because we hadn't budgeted that. And the second one was that we had the Guildhall towers. That result had come through and it was quite a shock to think what that could cost. So some money was put aside for that. And the third one was ready to do St Peter's. So what they did is looked at the risk assessment and said, instead of putting the money back into, into spending, is to actually put it back into reserves just to highlight for those three particular projects. So that was the decision of the finance committee.
Noted. We'll make sure we spend in full this year. I appreciate that. I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to do it clarified because we debated it last month. Moving on to eighty-eight twenty-two, this will be short and sweet. To approve the small grant applications distributed to members prior to the meeting, and I don't believe we have any.
Again, I have to, something I actually did ask you about is that I thought I'd actually forgotten to do their grant. So I was practically putting all this stuff together, realised we actually had put it through, so there is none for this meeting.
Lovely. Now that we're in a new financial year and the sort of pot, as it were, has been topped up. And will we be doing some sort of publicity to promote the fact that it's available again for people to apply?
We can do, I'll speak to.
I'm amazed how many groups don't know about it and don't apply. There's lots of groups in Fethford that, you know, £300 would be quite helpful, actually.
Maybe we can put a post on social media.
Yeah. Wait till after the Jubilee.
I would ask anyone before then.
Get away with everything else, but no, I think, you know, it'd be good for the committee to promote it, if you're members of any groups as well. Having a one a month, I think is a good, you know, rather than having loads in one go, so we try and pace them out throughout the year. Eighty-nine twenty-two, update on the BFIR River Trail. To receive an update on the proposed BFIR River Trail and the results of the audit undertaken of information boards and other points of interest that could be concluded or included. Need, Stuart?
So I think last time we spoke, I explained that the BFIR were looking to do their trails and get that box ticked that they deliver their projects. So they were looking at a trail really down the centre to the coffee mill and then another one down to Blakenbridge. So I've gone through, met with Nick Dixon from there and looked at what information boards we've already got in there. Highlighted a couple of areas where there will be, I think I mentioned like Tannist, the Tannist Street car park, where the tannery was, pointing to things like that. So now you've got to finalise with him our wishlist, which I'll then bring back to here. Which, I think last time we spoke, we had ten thousand in there for the sculpture trail, Alan, which means we can use some of that for potential holes to fill in the heritage trail as are part of the contribution to the BFIR project. We can still use the remainder of that for a sculpture trail in other places, whether we use to site it along the existing BFIR trails or whether we look to go back to our original proposal, I think Dave was a member of that group, maybe look into do the Viking bank from Canterbury Way through Red Castle across the cemetery down to Nunt Bridges. So the first stage is for me to get with Nick to just rubber stamp those two or three items that we want to put forward at filling the holes. They're going to use the existing information panels with QR codes, which is what the future seems to be. They have had Chuck from Bushy Ventures out on the river and they've done some filming. It was like three sixty camera, so that when you're looking at it, you can scroll round on the film to see things. So we're working with him to do a script which will fit with that river, taking down the river for that as part of the BFIR trails. So it's an ongoing thing, so hopefully by next meeting I'll have two or three items to bring forward to this committee to choose whether we fund or not. But we are progressing.
Sounds really positive. One of the things I did last week in Cornwall was St Michael's Mount and everything was QR codes. There was no printed material, no display boards, because they don't have to pay for a new display board every time they update the information or things change. It's all digital, which I thought was quite interesting. Yes, Dennis?
Can I request you don't go that way? We'll have a Dennis speech. No one. I'm sorting out your tablet for you.
Yes, you should. You can explain QR codes.
But you know all the information is, so we do.
I don't have a phone, I'm the first QR code, so.
Appreciate that, Stuart, thank you for the update.
I hope there will be a trail leaflet of some kind, which will be a downloaded one, so if you go home or if you've got a friend who's got a printer you want to get that printed out to go.
Oh, I've got printers, I haven't got a phone.
You could just go for what we're doing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? No, slip up. Nine zero twenty-two, update on the front garden competition. Nick styled the Honda on this one earlier on. I've been really pleased with whoever it is that deals with the social media for the town council, they've done some really, you know, regular posts about that, so I'm grateful for that. And you'll see that I sneakily put something in the About Fethford magazine this month, so hopefully that will generate some more entries. I think, well, I'm not too missed it that they will come in during June. I mean, a lot of people's gardens only really just started getting going, so they'll come in during the month. Dennis?
Now, a little bit concerning that our commercial side of it's not giving you an entry. So, I mean, is there any way we can, you know, somebody talk to them or?
Well, anyone can nominate, you can, you know, councillors can nominate. So if you see any, I mean, I must confess, I haven't seen any, I mean, Chris and I have been out and about this month and we have between us submitted residential nominations, but I have to admit, I haven't done any business ones, so.
We have to get clearance from the business before we nominate them, wouldn't we?
Yeah. And they'd be coming over the moon, I think, to be nominated.
That's where the responsibility goes, yeah, okay.
Well done. The only other thing I wanted to mention was I had put in a couple of nominations myself for sort of residents that I've seen. And then the town clerk pointed out to me that because I'm one of the judges, probably I shouldn't nominate. So I just wanted to run it past us because we've got five people on the judging panel and we haven't officially decided if anyone that's the judge should or shouldn't be able to nominate. So I just wanted to see what folks thought about that. I mean, I was just happily nominating people. Because if that is going to be the case, then we kind of need to tell those five people that are on the judging panel, the mayor, somebody from the garden law club, that they can't nominate everybody, otherwise we might be stuck for judges. Does anyone have any particular strong views? Stuart?
I'm just conscious of the pragmatic situation we're in, as much things, I'm grateful you have nominated people. And I would hope that, you know, the other judges will be objective enough to sway you and say, well, actually. Say, well, actually, I was ten times better than that when you nominate, if there was a situation where bias was perceived. But, um, I think let it go this year. Let's just get it.
Yeah, that was kind of my fault because, um, you know, we're not sole judges. There are five of us and it's a consensus decision. So, um, I mean, I, you know, can pass my nominations on to other people.
You can't all win.
All right, well, I'll bear that in mind, but, um, I was gonna retract the nominations I put in to not muddle the waters. But, um, uh, okay, I'll, I'll carry on nominating you. Uh, anything else anyone wants to raise on front garden competition? Nope. Super. Thank you for your work on that, Nick. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, ninety one twenty two, grazing of Barnham Cross Common, uh, to update the committee on the status of the current grazing agreement. And to decide on a way forward to fulfil the council's obligations to natural England.
Yep, so that, um, so the grazing now includes Ford Meadow and briefly Castle Park. So the new agreement has been drawn up, just waiting signing, uh, in town council and the current grazers. If the councillors are happy to proceed with that type of management on those three areas. So that would take the new agreement up to the thirtieth of December and it would include those areas, so Barnham Cross, Ford Meadow and Castle Park. That's just a management tool, just so we could fulfil our obligations to natural England.
Dennis, sorry.
Sorry, no, it's me again. Um, when we set up this grazing policy and everything, we, 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 were doing our, like our tendering where we took in three grazing people and, and, and read the tenders and everything. Now, this one is just, uh, I just consider continuation, sorry, of, of the previous agreement. And are there any major changes in this?
Uh, there's no major changes apart from adding Castle Park.
So that wasn't part of the original agreement?
No, it wasn't part of the original. So we, we haven't opened this grazing thing up to general people. Uh, you know, other graziers, we've just started with the one we've got, which is perfectly, you know, he's a great, he's Dennis. So, so there hasn't been any, uh.
Yeah, so for the current situation, that's all fitting quite nicely. And there's no reason why in the future we can revisit the re-tending process.
Yeah, I think, me personally, I mean, I'm, I'm quite happy with accepting it this way. But I do think we need to consider re-tendering and everything because it gives off to other people to, to other grazing. And we may get a better deal for re-tendering, we don't know. But that was just my opinion on it. Transparency.
Yeah, I think it's fair to put Dennis. Um, with the existing areas, um, I can't remember the length of the agreement that we had. Um, but presumably by adding this one in, it would all neatly finish up at the same place at the end of December. So they would all finish at the same point. So we could then do a job lot of all the areas under a separate, um, grazing arrangement after December.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, and presumably graziers have to think reasonably long term because, you know, there's a lot of logistics involved. So we would look to promote that before December so that they could know what they're doing next year.
Yeah, I presume so. So just out of courtesy, given plenty of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Logistics.
Yeah. And then from the town council point of view, look at those areas. So grazing is a great man, it's a management tool.
Yeah.
So we can still go ahead with it in the future.
Our agreement, I think, was for three years originally, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, it's a three-year agreement and we would look to do the three to five-year agreement again.
Yeah. I think adding one on to an existing agreement that's only got a short amount of time left makes good sense. There's no point, you know, but giving the opportunity to apply for the whole lot for a longer period makes good sense.
We agree to that. Is the likely time scale of the Castle Park one? Because I'm often getting asked when we have an animal.
Yeah, of course. Soon as we can, really. So if, um, everyone's happy, the contract gets signed, then yeah, should be imminent.
Uh, anything specific you need from us other than just the agreement?
No, I think it's just the agreement.
Okay. Um, can I have a proposer to accept what Stephen's proposing? Stephen and Dennis. And a second, yeah? Uh, all in agreement with what Stephen's suggesting?
Yeah.
Agreed. There you are. That gives you authority to get that signed up, get something on there, eat on the grass.
So we'll sign it from the town council's perspective and hopefully the grazers will be signing as well.
Anything I should need under? No?
No, that's it.
Okay, moving on, ninety two twenty two, Wheels on the Field, to update the committee on the status of the application and whether all the information required has been received. Uh, it says Leeds Finance Officer and Countryside Officer, although I suspect it's probably mainly Alan.
No, no, Stephen's been very helpful, he's been very helpful. I think, uh, to wrap up, we, we, we established quite, at the last meeting, we were asked to give a, send out a letter, say this is our requirement, if it wasn't submitted by that particular date, that the meeting, that we would withdraw permission. So we did that. Uh, the deadline was the twentieth of May. Uh, effectively just before the twentieth of May, we got clarification of, of the insurance. But there seemed to be a lot of uncertainty regarding the licensing from Breckland. Uh, so the organisers had indicated that they didn't need a temporary event notice. And we knew that they didn't need a temporary event notice because that's for events of four hundred and ninety-nine people or less at any point in time. And that indicated that their event was eight hundred. So we've, we've ended up steering them in the direction of, of Breckland. Uh, who, who's now getting the roster of, of the fact that there isn't a, a licence and they're in the process of doing that. From a, from a town council's perspective, we, we've got, we've got a copy of the insurance, uh, with all the requirements that we have set out have been met. But the risk is that they're going through a process, say what they call a safer action group at, at Breckland. And it's a matter of that they're doing the assessment. So they have a fire officer, for example, they have constabulary, they have all sorts of, you know, environmental planning and a whole lot of their stakeholders. And they're going through that particular application. So if we intervene in that particular process and say, well, we're happy you've met our requirements, there's a risk that we might not meet Breckland's requirements. We don't want to be putting ourselves in that predicament. But the only thing that I think as a committee that, that we, and like, so Stephen's been very supportive. We've had a lot of discussions around this, is ready for this committee to possibly say, uh, you've met our requirements, you've got insurance. If you meet Breckland's requirements, you can proceed. If you don't have Breckland's requirements, Breckland are actually the enforcement officers and they will actually close down your event. And that becomes the, the, the decision that possibly this committee could consider. Um, I'm not too sure how, you know, Breckland typically want twenty-eight days to do this. So the, the number of days have been cut down to about sixteen or seventeen. The town clerk and I get emails twice a day on the status of who's responding to, to the organisers from Breckland and who's not responding. Uh, and they seem to be quite, you know, that, that process is happening. But at the end of the day, if they don't have a licence for, for safer action group licence, Breckland, thirty-three will close them down. And, and, and I'm not sure whether we want, as a committee, want to rely on that process because there's nothing else that we can do in, in, in our own opinion.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for all the work that you've done on it. Uh, Dennis, share your answer first.
Well, I'm kind of beat to it because I, I was gonna suggest what, what was said that, 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 um, if it's down to Breckland now, that we, we proceed with it on the condition at the time it takes place that Breckland has issued them the licence, or then it's in Breckland's hands, what, what to do about it. So I, I would be in support of that, that, that way of doing it, if possible.
Yeah.
I'd like to say go ahead, but we've got to obey the rules.
Well, our involvement as a town council is landowner. It's no different than if any one of us rented out our garden or, you know, whatever. Um, we are content that they have, uh, the assurance in place and they have, uh, a risk assessment in place that we're happy with, but we are not the licensing authority. Um, that's Breckland.
Yeah.
So if Breckland say no, it's a no. If Breckland say yes, as far as we're concerned, we're, we're content. Are the committee generally happy with that approach?
Yeah.
As subject to Breckland being, uh, giving the go-ahead, we're happy for it to go ahead.
Yes.
Do you want that sort of formally resolved?
Uh, please.
Uh, I'm happy to propose that. Is there a seven to for that, please? Dennis, all in favour? Brilliant. I've just, just had a quick look. It's the nineteenth of June, isn't it?
It is.
So, um, uh, obviously we've got bank holidays and stuff in the way, but, um, it may be that Breckland is able to do what they need to do and, and issue the licence and he can go ahead. But, um, it's purely up to them.
Forty minutes of the giant phone call.
Can I just come in? Um, we were talking about relooking at how fast it would be in light of this. So I think we perhaps ought to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, is, is there anything in there about the licensing?
It just is, uh, that we require a licence from, from Breckland. But I think, I mean, we've, the, the, we've, we've done some research into this to see what, as a, the enforcement etcetera. So we, we've got a kind of little checklist that we're doing for the new policy, uh, that we need to put in, put, uh, put in place.
And also, I think the deadline thing, I mean, maybe we ought to say everything should be in place.
Yeah.
Thirty days before the event or.
Um, it is on our action point list, actually. So, yeah, and so, um, you know, with everything else going on, I wasn't gonna push it.
Yeah.
I think there have been, um, a number of incidents over the last month or so of, uh, people using town council land.
Yeah.
Uh, either with permission or without permission. And so I think it is quite timely that we do review it. But also what the approach is to enforcement. And we mentioned before that we need to review how other councils handle the enforcement. And one of the things I was gonna ask under this agenda item, um, because somebody's raised it with me, is the, um, the little coffee van that uses Nuns Bridge's car park. Whether the council's sort of, you know, formally aware of that, it's, you know, it's a positive thing, but we, we need to be consistent with people, that's the problem. And, and we've closed down vendors on other locations, but, um. Ah, okay.
Well, we might want to have a policy that we report in collections like that, to Breckland's other way.
Okay, anything else that I want to raise? No, thank you very much. Uh, ninety three twenty two, complaints and confidence, to note any complaints and confidence received in terms of the council's official policy relating to the activities of the committee.
Okay, so, um, the town clerk received a letter from a Mr Ellis on Monday the twenty-third of May. Uh, Mr Ellis visited the town on Saturday the twenty-first of May. And his comments was, what a pleasure to come to Vethford on Saturday to go to the Dad's Army locations tour. Free parking in a very clean town and toilets. What a credit to Vethford Town Council. I hope it brings a lot of people into the town to spend money in the town, you are putting people first. Well done to all. Yours sincerely, David Ellis from Berriest Edmonds.
Very good.
Yeah, I just think, you know, again, that, that shows a little bit of bearing fruit of the effort Nick and that team were making on the, the toilets, you know, cleaning them up. That first impressions counts, um, thing. And thanks to Nick, you know, the takeaways are much improved from they were six months on.
Brilliant. Good. I always like to receive positive news, which is really encouraging. Nothing else? We'll move on to correspondence, to note and discuss any correspondence received. None. Committee officers update, uh, to update any information since the agenda was released. None. To discuss and agree in consultation or media release required. We mentioned about small grants, but is there any other community engagement that members feel we need to? No, that'll do for now then. Um, so we'll go back quickly, once the time, yeah, we're in good time today. So I'll go back to action points and updates and we'll just, um, breeze through this list and see if there's anything to be aware of.
Stephen actually updated it, not Lee.
Oh, okay.
Credit to me. He deserves the credit.
Do email it out though. Thank you to Stephen. Um, so the first one there is to discuss who owns the land and where the Thomas Paine statue stands. And there's a bit of an update, actually.
There is certainly a bit of an update. So I done a land registry check and the land sits with the G W S Standforth Trust.
It did.
Yeah.
I always thought it.
So the land is owned by the trust that the Thomas Paine's on.
Um, now that we've got, um, that sort of clarified, Dennis, are you happy we take that off as an action point?
Yes, yeah. So I've found out what I need to know. It was given to the town, so the borough council accepted it. But obviously the, the lines were blurred between the borough council and the Standing Forth, as many things have happened over the years.
I'm just thinking about that, you know, lettering project that we're working on, but the bid needs to come from Standing Forth rather than the town council. Uh, second one, to repair, to prepare a report for the press on the environmental benefit of the grazing on Barnham Common and Castle Park, to be completed when grazing has been organised for Castle Park. That's quite timely, seeing as we're just given the, the go-ahead for that. Um.
So I did include that at the bottom. So there's a lot, some information on grazing there as well.
Yeah.
So it takes in the areas while we do it, while other places do it.
Yeah.
Was that cross a bit on the document that we got? Because it seemed to end in a, um, I said it has, have also been recorded locally at the, and then it finished, so. I was very keen to read it on, just write the picture of the water buffaloes right at the bottom.
Is there much more to that? Yeah.
The end. Um, the members content that we take that one off now, now that, that work's been done and, um.
Yes. I mean, that was prepare a report for the press, so that's gonna go out when the grazing starts on, on Castle Park, is it? Yeah.
Yeah, that would be mine.
I'm not sure. Do, do papers for amenities go to all councillors? I appreciate we're virtually all councillors. But if you're not on amenities, you might not be aware of the conservation benefits. I'm just thinking that particular section might be useful to send to all councillors, just so that we are all aware. And there's not many, I appreciate there's not many more left. Um, but I think, you know, it's useful for all councillors to be aware of why we do this. If you're on amenities or not. So, um, seeing as you've done that, we might issue that to everybody. I think that'd be really useful. Yeah, thank you. So we'll take that one off as well. Um, to, third one, to quantify the costs for the renewal of the play areas and prepare an annual funding plan. Uh, as we mentioned, uh, Nick's working on, uh, costings and we will have a working group meeting, uh, as soon as that information is ready. So we'll leave that one on at the moment. Fourth one, to discuss with Breckland Council the results of the mowing regime consultation.
Yes, I've, they've had the, the results from the consultation. It's come from the contact from Breckland's. Haven't heard anything back from Breckland and considering to them the mowing season. Essentially, it's probably been waylaid for this year.
Yeah.
But maybe hope to revisit the next mown season.
Yeah, really useful if we could revisit that, particularly in the autumn and set in place a plan for next year. I certainly have had residents email me about mowing already. Um, Breckland seemed to have abandoned no mow May. There's plenty of mowing going on in May. They were all over no mow May last year, but they're mowing quite happily this year, so. Um.
I thought it is June now, so.
They're doing no mow May in June, is that what it is? So we'll leave that one on there for the time being. Hopefully by the autumn we'd have found out a bit more. Uh, open space policy, as discussed, um, probably guided by, uh, you, uh, Alan, on, um, when we would receive that back at the committee and when you'll have the time to sort of do the necessary changes to the policy and bring it back. So probably not, uh, I would imagine July, perhaps maybe sort of September time.
That could be.
Yeah. I kind of use the action points as a bit of a sort of working, uh, work programme as well, so it's all. Six, Mill Lane seeding and signage, awaiting costs for the permit to erect posts, signage to be completed, seeding process to get quotes underway. Is that one of you, Nick?
Yeah, so I'm gonna be overseeing that one. Yeah, so hopefully, um, within the next sort of week or two, I should get some quotes. And then we can get things moving to get that area completed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for the, um, costs, the exact costing to come back for the permit to erect the posts. Yeah, I'm still waiting for the, um, costs, the exact costing to come back for the permit to erect the posts. But we're sort of suggesting maybe do the seeding anyway and then add the posts. Yeah, just initially to tolerate the area.
Yeah, definitely. Seven, to prepare an inventory of all street furniture in the town. This is a six-month project. Do we have a sort of completion date in mind for that one?
So I'm pretty much near-listed all of our street furniture that I've come across around the town. Um, the next phase for myself is to work with Breckland and Norfolk to establish who owns some of the street furniture. Um, because one believe is we don't own everything, you know, they've got to take some responsibility for some of the areas. Um, so as soon as I get any information, that will be further updated, but it's well underway. So I'm guessing probably another couple of months and we should be there.
Um, I'm just wondering, if we had an interim report in July and you present what you've got?
Yep.
And then if we all take, I mean, there's a lot of us here and we are all out and about doing stuff. We don't meet in August, but if you tell us what you've got in July and then over the summer, if we can all bear in mind, if we're out and about and we see bits of street furniture that are not on the list, we can come back in September and tell you and plug the gaps, basically.
That'd be great.
Yeah, keep me happy with that.
Yes.
When Dave's doing his euphoria walks in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, when, um, if we identify the items don't belong to us and belong to other councils, is it a plan for us to keep an eye on and look after them and, and bill the other councils for it? Is that the sort of agreement we're working towards?
I think that's the way we've got to look to go forward because, you know, the, the Breckland District Council must own some of these areas. Um, they own the land, so they should own some of the assets.
Yeah.
Um, we've just got to quantify with the licences that were being agreed over the years, which they own and which we own. Um, so we can go forward and obviously know that we're spending money wisely and we're not spending money on.
Yeah, and whether they will contribute.
That's right.
And maybe we can charge it to them, yeah.
Yeah. Anything, Dennis?
As some of us who have been councillors for a while would know, there are areas of Bethford that are not listed as owned by anybody absolutely at all. Hence our car park, what was our car park, our meatties space now was an unregistered area. Um, and so what is going to happen with that? If we come across areas that are not owned by anybody, do we necessarily want to claim those areas? Because that's more expense sometimes. Or do we just let somebody else register it or what? I don't know. Yeah, we should have a policy on whether, because there are unregistered pieces of land around Bethford. And, and not just a rare little bit, there are quite considerable.
Is there an asset we should try and claim?
We should, well, that's what we did with the car park. The market area, we claimed it and then got threatened with fines and everything, so.
Rather than dealing with quite physicals, should, should we let Nick come back? Then I will explain that question if he finds it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just, ever so simplistic. If there was a landowner, a known recognised person applying to claims the line, Breckland owns King Street or whatever, is it possible to have street furniture determined by somebody else?
We could do if there was a licence drawn up, and this is what we need to quantify, where licences were probably drawn up over the years. Yeah, and who actually owns the furniture. Yeah.
So it's not a simple matter of saying someone owns that piece of land therefore.
Yeah, there's somewhere down the line, probably, you know, say, ten, twelve years ago, um, councillors could have come to some agreement with Norfolk County Council that a licence was granted to place benches onto their land. So we just need to quantify with them with the paperwork that we are definitely taking on what we own, one hundred percent.
Good.
Yeah.
That's an easy question, actually.
It does get complicated.
It does.
Norwich Road residents, we had licence to cultivate a small area, in fact, it was a large tubular. And then we had a Breckland officer, uh, berating someone who was working on it, saying, you, you shouldn't be doing that, go, go away. Uh, we had, and they didn't have a copy of the licence, but luckily we did. And so we went to show them we did have a licence. So it does get complicated, it's a record, hard to find, doesn't it?
And hence why, I just want to lay the point, but, um, having our own it, it's so important because we've got to establish a foundation. And I would imagine that we will find an awful lot of bits of street furniture that there are no licences for. And, uh, you can bet your bottom dollar, Breckland won't want to claim them. So it'd be, and we, it won't be July, August and September and we have a complete list. We'll be adding things to it next year, I'm sure, when we just have bits we've missed up, but we've got to start somewhere. Uh, moving on then, uh, item, uh, eight, uh, to report back on the toilet cleaning contract review. Um. We haven't, we haven't heard much about the toilets for a while, other than that we're genuinely happy and how things are progressing. And when is the current contract up for renewal? I can't remember the length of the contract and when it started.
It started in January, the eleventh of January, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, oh, it's, it's a, there was three-year costs obtained on it.
Yeah.
But we, there was speculation that, it's quite vague, whether it's a one-year contract, but there, there were three-year, there were three-year prices provided.
Okay. My, my, my reason for asking that is rather than having something on there for the sake of it, I mean, there's not really a specific action there. And we as a committee need to put in the diary an appropriate month when we will review the contract and agree to put it out tender. Um, so I would suggest for the time being, we remove that particular action. And, and we forward plan when we know the contract is coming up for the end date. Six months before, review the specification and agree to put it out tender. So if we can work out when that is. Um, obviously we pick up compliments and complaints on an ongoing basis, but for now, I think if we remove that one and.
It wasn't like a review of the quality of the thing, was it?
Yeah, I think it was in response to some specific issues, which I think have been dealt with.
They have, yeah. I'm holding, um, regular sort of contact with the contractor. Um, and they have shown significant improvements, so they've taken on more staff.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the positive feedback is good. Um, so at the moment, if there's any issues, I will update further as and when, yeah.
Through your town teams report, we get mention of toilets often, so we kind of dealt with that one through that, okay? Uh, next one, to obtain updates on the fish pass and whether the Environment Agency will complete the project this year. Uh, we'll just leave that as is. Last one, to consider whether to take on temporary maintenance of a flint wall on school plain. Waiting for more information from English Heritage, which I assume we don't have.
No, they approached, um, I've seen the town clerk regarding it, going back a few months now, but we still haven't really heard any more information from them.
I think if we've given back the NPA on the prior, it's not going to be, why, why would we want to, to, uh, look at taking on another one?
Are there any other action points that we've not included on our list that we need to agree to? Nope. Good. I think that's a record. We've taken three off and not added any off. It's good news in my book. So, um, thank you for all of you that have been working on those actions and enabled us to take them off. Um, on my relevant page. So, uh, yeah, we've dealt with all the agenda items, therefore meeting closed. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you.